Our priorities focus on creating welcoming and inclusive schools, embracing land-based learning, and honoring truth and reconciliation in meaningful and intentional ways. We strive to foster learning environments where every child feels safe, valued, and inspired to grow. Tonight, we are joined by representatives from our principal and vice-principal group, kindergarten teacher, early childhood educator, and parent representatives, all here to provide information and answer your questions. I'd also like to welcome and thank our director of education, Will Goodman, for being with us tonight. We are excited for you to become part of the CGDSB family and community, where your child will be supported and encouraged to thrive. To begin our evening, I am pleased to introduce Chelsea Adams, our early years lead, who will share more about our kindergarten program. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Perfect. Thank you, Flora. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. So, we're excited to welcome you to our first virtual kindergarten information session. So whether you're here to learn more about the registration process, or just to get a sense of what kindergarten is all about, we're here to guide you every step of the way. So throughout tonight's session, we'll be sharing some helpful information, answering your questions, and giving you an overview of what you can expect in the year ahead. We encourage you to ask questions along the way, and you can do so by popping your questions into the chat pod. If you have any specific or personal questions that relate to your child, you can email us, and we'd be happy to support you privately. This call will be recorded, so if you're comfortable keeping your camera on, please go ahead and do that. And if not, that's okay too. We're just happy that you're here with us. So we're going to start with a short SGDSB video that really showcases a few of our kindergarten classrooms throughout the school board, both in and outside of the classroom. Enjoy.
Welcome to the Superior Greenstone District School Board, where kindergarten marks the beginning of a lifelong journey through a supportive and high-quality education. Our schools create inclusive spaces where every child feels welcomed, valued, and ready to thrive. Our kindergarten program combines meaningful play-based learning with foundational skills, like literacy and numeracy. Educators design environments that spark curiosity, encourage collaboration, and inspire a love of discovery. Outdoor learning is central to our approach. Through nature walks, outdoor play, and storytelling under the trees, these experiences nurture creativity, resilience, and a deep connection to the environment. We guide every child academically, socially, and emotionally, tailoring learning experiences to their unique strengths. Our team works closely with families, creating a warm and supportive school community. Kindergarten is a time for growth, joy, and discovery. If you're ready to learn more about enrolling your child, we'd love to hear from you. Reach out to your local school or connect with us directly to start the conversation. Together, let's create a strong foundation for your child's future.
So we're going to get started with our panelists. So first off, I would just like to thank everybody for being here. All the panelists, thank you for taking time out of your evening to be here. And we're going to start with Michelle Morrow. She is the kindergarten teacher at Terrace Bay Public. I had the privilege of visiting her classroom before Christmas, and you can just see the love she has for teaching. Her students love her, and her classroom is just like so organized and beautiful. So, Michelle, this question is going to be for you. We're going to start with you. So as a teacher, how do you create engaging and meaningful learning experiences for kindergarten students throughout the day?
Okay, everyone can hear me right?
We can hear you. It's just a little low.
Okay. I don't know what I just did to my... Okay. Okay, so to create engaging and meaningful learning experience for the children, I incorporate hands-on learning and interactive activities that connect to their natural curiosity and development. For example, for literacy outside of our explicit literacy programs, we might set up writing centers that could be a post office, where students can deliver and write letters to each other, practicing their letter recognition and writing in a fun way. This makes it purposeful for them, and I find that it's especially fun at Christmas time, where they can make letters for Santa. We just did this at Christmas time, and it's just so exciting for them. And then that activates their prior knowledge from our literacy instruction as well. We like to provide STEM challenges, like something like providing building blocks that challenges students to construct something like a bridge, strong enough to hold a toy car, that sparks their curiosity and their problem solving. And this activates their science and mathematical thinking. We like to maintain their social skills throughout the day, so we have a lot of dramatic play centers. We switch them up regularly. Right now, we have our kitchen center. That's always a big hit, but we're kind of moving into winter and all that kind of everything around them, so that it's purposeful and it's something they can relate to. So we switch those up often just to make sure that they are engaged. We might provide costumes or different materials, things that they make. It really can go anywhere. We also think outdoor learning is super important, so we do things like scavenger hunts or bring outside inside. Again, we build on our inquiries like winter. Today, we made birdhouses and brought them outside, so that we can see if any strangers in the woods come up. Just making sure that they're super engaged all the time and tailoring the activities to their interests and needs, and ensure that learning is both meaningful and enjoyable.
That sounds wonderful. It sounds like you're doing like so many different ways of keeping them engaged. I love that. And I was lucky enough to see her Santa mailbox when I was there, so that was really cool. Okay, question number two. What are some of the most valuable ways parents can help their children transition smoothly and confidently into kindergarten?
Okay, so I think parents can help transition their children into kindergarten smoothly by just making sure that their child is following routines. They're getting some structure, but also building excitement for them to come to school and just practicing their key skills creatively. For example, I think they could do like a practice school day, where they kind of follow a structured day, have a snack in the morning, get them sitting for a little bit of time, have them play, do a lunch, just kind of like a practice run-through at school would be, maybe pack a backpack, see what they need help with, getting dressed, try to see how independent they can be, maybe make a countdown chain. We've done this for numerous activities, and it's very exciting to cut off the next day, so make a countdown to school, make it exciting. Maybe like role-play, like teacher and student. Building independence, like I said, making, see what they can do independently, like tying shoes, doing up zippers. And then, of course, like building or visiting the classroom together, so we'll have our transition days. We do encourage that if parents want to come in either before or after or throughout, to come on in, because that's sometimes what your child might need. But I think what's also really, really important is to be honest with your educators if you have any concerns or something you're working towards. Just know that the teachers are a team. We want to work with you. So I think it's very important to be honest and just to remember that we are a team together.
I love that. Thank you so much for sharing, and I like the countdown chain idea. I could see my kids loving that. Okay, we're going to go to your third question. How does the role of the early childhood educator enhance the learning and development of young children in the kindergarten class?
Okay, so Jamie was supposed to join us today, but she had to leave today because she's sick. The flu is very much going around our community. So she did write down answers to her questions, so I'm just going to pull that up. So just bear with me. Okay, so she says, "As an ECE, her role is to bring knowledge of child development and play-based learning, which complements instructional skills of the classroom teacher. Together, we create a warm, supportive environment where young children feel safe, valued, and excited to learn. We foster from their growth through play, helping them develop social skills, confidence, and self-regulation. By observing their interests and needs, we guide their learning in a way that feels natural and meaningful. As a team, we work closely with families to support each child's development, ensuring they have the best start to their education."
Thank you so much, and thanks for covering for her tonight. All right, last question. What are some positive routines or strategies parents can use to help their children feel refreshed and supported after a busy day of school, especially in September?
She said there are three strategies that I highly recommend: time, play, and a routine. As both an educator and a parent, I know that after a busy school day, the greatest gift you can give your child is your time. Providing your child or children with a calm transition after school allows them to unwind and feel connected. Nonetheless, I know how difficult it is to find that time, with errands to run, housework to do, meals to prepare, and let's not even talk about the extracurricular activities that we must get to. However, even a simple 10-minute check-in, a cuddle while showing genuine interest in their day can have a lasting impact. Another great strategy is to encourage free play opposed to screen time. Play is a great way to let them release energy and process their day. Lastly, I try to keep evenings predictable. A simple routine with dinner, fresh air, bath, and bedtime helps them feel secure and well-rested to start another wonderful day in kindergarten.
Thank you so much. That was wonderful advice for new parents. And thank you so much for sharing, Michelle. All right, we're going to be moving on to Erin. We're going to introduce Erin Fuchs. He is the vice-principal of Scriber Public and has already made such a positive impact since starting in our school board. So Erin, this question is for you. What makes your school community unique compared to larger schools? And how does that positively impact the kindergarten experience?
All right, good evening, everybody, and thanks for coming tonight. I'm going to keep my answers relatively short, because Michelle had a lot of great wisdom, and a lot of what I was going to say, she took many of the words right out of my mouth. I, as Chelsea mentioned, I'm new to Superior Greenstone, having moved from the Kitchener-Waterloo area this fall, where the size of schools is quite different from up here in the north, where our kindergarten classes sat at 30 to 32 students, and there was four per school. I've loved being on the North Shore at Scriber Public and experiencing small schools that truly do make a difference. I think that there are five main things when we talk about the size of a school and us having smaller schools that benefit kids. The first is personalized attention. With smaller class sizes, your student will get that personal one-on-one more often. In our kindergarten room at Scriber Public, we are providing small-group instruction two to three times a day in language. It's fantastic for academic achievement. There's a close-knit community of people. When we talk about smaller schools, people know each other. There is a high level of care because of that closeness of individuals and students in the school. The third benefit, I think there is to a smaller school, is enhanced communication. When you're dealing with a school of 400, it's hard to get the message across to all 400. When you're dealing with a community of 50 students, it's a lot easier, and you can reach out to people and they get back to you a lot quicker than if you're dealing with a large school. Fourth, I would say that the curriculum, because of small numbers, becomes more flexible. There's the opportunity to have a lot more creativity with how you present things to kids, and innovation. That's, we've taken aim at that at Superior Greenstone, embracing innovation, and I've seen it in my school and others since starting. Fifth, I think because of that close-knit community, the relationships are extremely strong, and in education, that is the foundation for the success of all we do, is strong relationships. Finally, community involvement. I have been blown away by the amount of opportunity. Again, I didn't know the area at all before making a quick move here, and I have been blown away by the amount of opportunities kids have to be out in their community, from attending Remembrance Day ceremonies, to making field trips to Thunder Bay, to a pumpkin patch, to hikes along the Cascay Hills Trail. It's pretty incredible. So in terms of community involvement, I have a strong philosophy of holistic teaching, and we're trying to make kids who are good humans in their community, and that opportunity to connect with community in that way is something that just doesn't happen in larger communities.
Thank you so much for sharing. I agree, the Lake Superior Scriber area is beautiful. Lots of beautiful hikes. Okay, question number two. What advice would you give to new kindergarten parents as they prepare their child for kindergarten?
So I'm a man of many lists. I function off of them on a daily basis. So I made a list of 10 things, I think, would be my advice. The first is focus on routines, and that's something Michelle already said. Between now and the start of school, again, you're starting to get your child up at a consistent time every day and getting to bed at an early time every evening. Secondly, encourage independence. Again, Michelle kind of mentioned that. We know that it is often easier to get your child out the door and zip up their coat and put their boots on, because you've got to be somewhere. Allow for time and allow them the opportunity to do it. At first, it might be more frustrating than you would like, but they will get it with patience. Third, foster social skills. Try and get them out in the community if there's play groups nearby or students in your neighborhood or children in your neighborhood. Connect them and allow for play dates. Fourth, read together. Foster that love of reading and literacy. They might not be able to read right now, but you showing them that reading is a safe thing, that it's a fun thing, reading before bed every night will go the distance. Fifth, visit the school. When there is those opportunities in the spring to visit your child's school, getting them used to the classroom and some of the main locations like the gym and library, it won't seem so big of a place to them. Sixth, talk positively. We are in partnership, parents and educators, to educate kids and help them grow. Talk positively about your school experience, their school experience, and especially when they might come home and say, "Oh, it's so scary," or "There's lots of tears." Know that they will get over it, and sometimes it's actually harder for parents than it is for students. Seventh, maybe, practice fine motor at home. So any opportunity to be using their fingers, so Play-Doh, coloring, that helps with a lot of the tasks when they get to school, like opening lunchboxes and doing those zippers. Eighth, listen to them and reassure them, similar to Michelle's answer again. What do you do when they get home from school? Listen to them, reassure them. You know what? Back tomorrow, things are going to be great. Ninth, label belongings. Things get lost. The amount of mittens that get lost in a school is incredible. You spend a lot of money on things. Take the time to label it, and we will get it back to you. The amount of times I've held up a mitten and asked somebody, and everybody in the kindergarten class says, "Not mine," is unbelievable. And lastly, stay involved. There will be lots of opportunities through school council, even directly with your child's teacher. There may be asks for things like recycled materials, or do you have any extra craft things at home that you'd like to send in? Take the opportunity to get involved. That's it. That's the end of my list of 10.
Love it. Erin, thank you so much, and I laughed out loud when you said "label," because I've been a kindergarten teacher for the last five years, and that is just so helpful when parents label, especially mittens. So thank you so much.
And somehow socks, too. Somehow socks.
All of it. Yeah, they have no idea what they're wearing. So that was funny and very helpful. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to Heidi Kluch. Heidi is the principal of BA Parker. So we're going from a relatively small school to one of our larger schools in the school board. So BA Parker is in Darrylton. And Heidi, this question is for you. What kinds of resources and support systems are available at larger schools to empower parents and children during the transition to kindergarten?
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming out tonight. It's so nice to see you. So BA Parker is a larger school, but it's definitely not the 400 that Erin was talking about. So a little bit of a middle perhaps, but larger than some. We have about 23 kiddos in our JK-SK class, and because we have the big numbers, we get a lot of support for our kiddos. So we have a teacher. We're fortunate to have an ECE as well, so an early childhood educator that helps in the class. We did have Chelsea. I want to mention her, super experienced kindergarten teacher. And experience is very important. Chelsea has trained, can I use that word, has trained or supported or helped our new kindergarten teacher. So a lot of her tips and tricks and everything have been passed over to the new kindergarten teacher that we have. So it's a very effective team. We also have two educational assistants in the classroom, and we have two special education teachers in the building that help support kiddos, particularly with transition. So there, it's usually myself, the two special education teachers, and the teaching staff that are in there in the first weeks of September, making sure that backpacks get put on the hooks where they're supposed to get placed on, and students know where agendas are and where they go, because it is a little bit busy at the very beginning of September until routines are kind of talked about in the classroom. We're also fortunate to have Jen DeRoy, who's a positive behavior support worker in the building, and she can help with transitions before September as well. And that brings me to my next step. We always run potentially three times when students can come in before September to get used to the teacher that will be there, the ECE, EAs, the sets, and the big team that's going to be supporting them. So we usually have a welcome-to-kindergarten night, where there's some activities, and they can just see the classroom by themselves without the other kiddos. The next visit would be when there are kiddos there, and they come in for a short period of time, usually with family at that time. And then the last one is they might visit just for a little bit of time on their own, so that they're kind of used to the space and used to the people before September, and I find that really helps with transition quite a bit. We are connected to the daycare, and that makes a wonderful transition piece, too. A lot of the daycare kids will walk the JKs over to their classroom, so they get used to the building before they're even there, which is a really neat thing and a unique thing for our building. We have a very strong relationship with the Thunderbird Friendship Center, and they can offer support as well. In the past, sometimes they've bought like little backpacks and a couple of supplies and stuff like that in there as they come in, and they meet the kiddos, and they learn who they are, because it's important. They often will give presentations or complete activities throughout the whole school year, so they're part of the very beginning part of transitioning for these little JKs. Two other things would be, because we're a bit of a larger school, we have a large school council. So, you know, if you are looking for supportive parents, and I believe we have Kayla on the line here, too, or on the video chat as well. We have a large group, and this is the last one, we have a large group of parents, both current parents, or their kids have, or they were students at BA Parker's. We have past and present parents, and it's a huge community. So there's always somebody to reach out to. I think, unless I'm missing anything, I think that's what I was thinking about.
Perfect. Heidi, thank you so much. And I, as a kindergarten teacher, getting to meet the kids in the spring, like before September, is so crucial. It's a really good chance for us to get eyes on them, and then to have that bond already before they get dropped off. And we do have an amazing parent with us, Kayla Nanakizik. I've been lucky enough to teach her daughter, Amber. I taught her last year and then for the first few months of this year. So Kayla, thank you so much for joining us as a parent. We're excited to hear your perspective about the transition to kindergarten. So first question for Kayla. What were some of the most successful steps you took as a parent to help prepare your child for kindergarten?
So first, hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I think one of the biggest steps that we took, which was touched on, was doing a walkthrough, making them way more comfortable with the environment, meeting the teachers, the principal, seeing the classroom, seeing what they're going to be doing. And my daughter was able to meet some of the kids that she would be in class with, and that was, it was very helpful. She was super nervous going in, and it was great. Some successful steps that we took at home, exploring the letters in her name, getting her more comfortable with being able to spell it out by herself. We did a lot of engaging in developmental games, such as like matching, a lot of number games and shapes. We also, which was touched on too, we had a very, we tried to have a very strict bedtime reading routine and make sure it's the same every night. We woke up at the same time every day, even on the weekends. It just made it so much easier to be able to get up and get ready. We also did a lot of practicing with self-regulation and regulating her emotions, and just being able to let us know how she's feeling and asking her every single day, "How are you today? Are you happy? Are you sad?" We had like a little chart that she'd be able to circle how she feels that day, and then to relay why she feels that way. And that was also super helpful. And we did a lot of practicing with fine motor skills, like that was touched on too. We did a lot of Play-Doh, a lot of clay, like modeling clay and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you so much. It was very noticeable as teachers that you worked so hard with her. Like she's a very bright girl, and she came in so ready for kindergarten. So we appreciate that as the teachers when parents work hard. Okay, question number two. Can you share a challenge your child faced when starting school and the strengths or strategies that helped them overcome it?
So I think one of the biggest challenges was just adjusting to a new environment, an environment that was more structured. She also had a little bit of separation anxiety, being away from parents. She wasn't able to attend daycare before kindergarten, so it was just mom and dad every day, all the time. So that was a little bit of a problem. She didn't want to be away from us, so she had that little bit of separation anxiety. She, a little bit of learning how to interact socially and how to share and how to sit still and how to manage her emotions. Those were the biggest challenges. And to overcome those, we just established consistent routines and had open communication with her, the teacher, about her feelings and her emotions, and just learning how to navigate all those emotions, and just make school a positive thing. We talked about it positively every day, like reading's positive, learning is positive, meeting all the new kids, and being able to socialize. We just tried to make it a very positive thing, even if she came back with just being sad from being away from home, or it was hard to learn new things. We just tried to make everything just a very positive experience.
Thank you, Kayla, so much. I think Amber's come out of her shell a lot. Amber's actually going to be doing an interview with me for CFNO on Monday morning. So you'll tune in Tuesday, and you'll hear Amber and I doing a call together. So she's been practicing with me, and I sent Kayla. They're going to practice over the weekend. So Amber has come a very long way. She's such a leader in the kindergarten class. So, great job, Mama.
Thank you, and she's very excited for her interview.
Oh, good. All right, so we're moving on to our last panelist. Eric Flarue is the Learning for All principal. And so he supports all of the special education teachers and principals in our school board. So Eric, this question is for you. What are some effective ways parents can actively support and celebrate their child's learning and development, particularly when their child has... particularly when their child has unique or higher support needs?
Hi, welcome everyone tonight. One of the greatest things you can do, and I've heard that a few times tonight too, is communication and having that constant communication with the school team. So the school team, depending on the school you're at, it's Superior Greenstone, will have a variety of people that will connect with you on a daily, weekly, monthly basis regarding your child's individual needs. So really working closely with the principal, the special education teacher. If your child maybe gets support from an educational assistant or classroom teachers and making sure that you're connecting whenever you can with that school team, whether it's through some of our online platforms like Edsby or it's coming in for school meetings or connecting with the teachers over the phone. That constant communication and working and finding out what the classes are doing to support your student and doing that work at home too. So the connection between home and school is going to be one of the most important steps that you can take. Lots of the training that our special education staff have are supporting students in special ways and unique ways that help a lot if those strategies are continued at home as well. So, and then also sharing your expertise. So parents are the experts of their child. They know their child best and sharing that information with our school team. So the teams know their strengths, know their interests, know their triggers, know what works for them and knows what doesn't work for them. So they can tailor a program that is individual to their needs and will meet their individual needs on an individual basis and can support them the very best that they can.
Thank you so much, Eric. I agree, like communication is so key. And in kindergarten classes, most of the time, there's also like an agenda that the kindergarten teacher will write in and send home daily. So there's Edsby, you can communicate through Edsby. You can communicate through agendas. You can call and talk to the teacher or the principal, like so many different ways of communicating. Thank you so much, Eric. So that sums up our panelist questions. But I'd like to just give some time to the families online. If you have any questions, feel free to unmute your mic and ask us. There's such a wealth of knowledge in all of us here. So one of us, I'm sure, could answer your question. Or if you want, you can also pop it into the chat pot. So I'll just give a minute or two for questions and... Okay, so I see a question.